Call the February 2, 2021 Regular Meeting of Council to order. Councilman Krieger will give the invocation this evening.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landik?
Here.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Good evening. I want to welcome the public to the City Council Virtual Public Meeting. If you are attending through the published WebEx link, you will notice a window open on the bottom right-hand side of the screen entitled Q&amp;A. This window will have opened five minutes prior to the start of the meeting and will remain open for 10 minutes after the meeting begins for a total of 15 minutes. During that time, if you wish to address council at a later point in this meeting, please type your name, address, and the topic you wish to speak about. This is the only means for you to schedule your participation since the public cannot physically attend in person at this time. At the appropriate time during the meeting, I will recognize you and you will be unmuted. You will be permitted to make comments to council on the topic you requested to speak about. If you wish to comment on an agenda on the item, excuse me, on an item on the agenda, you will be recognized when that item appears on the agenda. All other comments unrelated to the agenda will be heard near the end of the meeting during the persons before council portion of the agenda. Please make your speaking request at this time, and thank you for your virtual participation. Approval of minutes. Council, you receive the minutes of the January 5, 2021 Regular Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Is Mr. Blake still? Okay. Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mark?
I just remembered as I looked at the city manager's memo, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of King 9 Officer Bo and thank him for his service and his 10, 10 years?
10, yes, sir, 10.
Thank you, Bo.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Table legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 21-0-008.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Central Business Equipment Company, DBA Patterson Pope, for the purchase of 95 Space Saver personal storage lockers and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. And council is aware that over the years, we have incrementally tried to upgrade this building and other facilities in the city as they age out. This is just one of those incremental upgrades. This will be improving locker space for our police department, both the men's and women's areas. And I will tell you as well that the lockers that are being replaced are original to this building, so you're already plus years into this, so they've served us well. Mr. Schwiker, please.
Thank you. The 2021 budget review process will discuss about hurry-up operation, aging through better police department. For this ongoing early upgrade is the plan to replace 95 40-year old lockers with whole personnel personnel. All these discussions, 129,000 program 2021 budget. Police and public works personnel are designated to deliver options and vendors on a recommendation to purchase 95 lockers from Patterson Pope to the state of Ohio in terms of government purchasing program for total price of 134,431.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-008 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-009.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a labor agreement on behalf of the city of Menor with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association Sergeants' and Lieutenants Union and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And council is aware that we have six labor unions and separate labor agreements that the city negotiates generally on a triennial basis. We brought you at your, one of your last meetings, I believe it was your last meeting, full-time firefighters' contract as well as the final year of the part-time firefighter's contract. Before you tonight, pleased to be able to bring you agreements with our two police unions. This first one covers our command ranks, our sergeants, lieutenants, and the second covers all patrolmen. And Mr. Zanpedro was integral to the negotiation process here, so I'm going to ask him to go over ordinance 009, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Council, again, very few major modifications to the contract. The wage package is a 2.5% per year over the three years of running through the end of March of 2023. A slight annual payment of $260 increase to their administrative duty pay. And we did restructure the holiday sell-back allowance in their contract. We had created a three-tier sell-back of 24 hours, 40 hours, or 60 hours, depending on when the employee was in the unit. And it made sense to bring that into a two-tier, a 40-hour and a 60-hour tier, which mirrors our patrolmen who also enjoy a 40 and 24-hour tier. So if, once upon promotion, that employee would be entitled to an increase in holiday hours to sell back, and that was sort of the reasoning why we wanted to restructure that. It wasn't incentive for promotion out of the patrolmen rank and the sergeants and lieutenants. Other than that, just a slight change in language in our injury-on-duty policy, and that really covers it all.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-009 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-010.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a labor agreement on behalf of the city of Menor with the Ohio Patrolmen's Benevolent Association and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And before I ask Mr. Zanpedro to go through some of the major details on this, I did, was remiss in saying originally, just want to go on the record and as we did at the last meeting, just when we presented the firefighter's contract, to just acknowledge the hard work that our police department has been doing throughout the pandemic. They, of course, work hard on our behalf, and we have nothing but great respect and appreciation for them every day, but, you know, these men and women have been out there on the front lines every day since the pandemic started. You know, a number of our officers have gotten sick with the disease. They've worked through it, and they've gotten back on the job. And, you know, I just think that the public should really stop and think about just how integral they are to keeping things moving in our community, so recommend this contract.
Mr. Zanpedro?
Thank you again, sir. Similar to the sergeants and lieutenants, we have a 2.5 increase annually for the three years of this contract and a shift differential that was adjusted for the shift of 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., an increase of 40 cents per hour. That shift differential has, to my knowledge, not been changed in at least 20 years. The importance of the 3 to 11 is it will equally affect, since we're on a 12-hour shift with this unit, each employee in each shift will enjoy that 40 cent increase four hours, depending on their shift. So it was a, again, the injury-on-duty adjustment, as I described before, is a slight language change. There is, in this one, though, council, an error from the original, not an error, just an adjustment from finance relative to the percentage increases. It is a one or two-cent increase in some of the steps. I did forward that to council. I'd asked the law director, do we need to enter each of those, or it's such a nominal, it's a rounding error in our finance system.
I think as long as the, sorry, Mr. President, as long as the record is clear relative to that adjustment that will be made, if council's comfortable with it, prior to execution, if we have to make a little adjustment to the contract, as long as the record's clear, I think we're in good shape.
Thank you. And I would also add that the police unit was very good to deal with and, again, echo the manager's comments about the great job they've done this past year in particular.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Zanpedro, for everything that you did, all our labor agreements, but we had six different ones, so a lot of work every three years.
We are still working on two others.
We're getting there.
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-010 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-011.
An ordinance to authorize advances of funds and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Malinowski?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Members of council, this ordinance does two main things. Firstly, it authorizes temporary cash advances out of our city's general fund in the amount of $2.4 million to allow us to issue purchase orders for the, out of our street fund and the street lighting fund in anticipation of collections that will occur at a later date. Those advances will be returned upon the collection of the revenue. And then, secondly, there are several appropriation adjustments, as noted in section 2. These are primarily items that came up subsequent to the passage of our appropriation ordinance back on December 1st or 2nd, I believe. So I would recommend approval of the entire ordinance. Thank you.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-011 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-012.
An ordinance approving the final subdivision and dedication plat of the Brookview Reserve Subdivision Phase 1 on Johnny Cake Ridge Road at permanent parcel number 16A0050000050 in the RVG Village Green District.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Mitchell, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak and members of council. The applicant has submitted a subdivision plat for Phase 1 of the Brookview Reserve Subdivision. Phase 1 includes 71 of the total 174 single-family dwelling units approved for the overall development. The total project area includes 73 acres of land on the south side of Johnny Cake Ridge Road. The property was rezoned to RVG Village Green in March of 2020. In addition to the 71 dwelling units, Phase 1 includes open space blocks A, B, and C containing approximately 3.85 acres of open space. The dwellings will have two points of access to a dedicated dwelling in Phase 1, which was a requirement of the preliminary development plan of approval. The planning commission reviewed the Brookview Reserve Phase 1 final plat at the January 21, 2021 meeting, and the commission recommended approval of Phase 1 for the development of 71 single-family dwellings by a vote of 7 to 0, with the conditions outlined at the end of the staff report provided. The text noted in red has been added by the administration's clarification of conditions. I have, Mr. Jim O'Connor is online from Polte Homes if there are any questions by council.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President, I have one question, just curious. What's the depth of the buffering on Johnny Cake? I know that the two entrances have, looks like extensive buffering, and then you have the base in there. What's the depth of that buffering?
You know what? I don't have that information offhand.
Well, do you know, is it a mound, is there a mounding?
Well, there's going to be definitely landscaping. They have to provide a landscaped area within that front, particularly Block B, but it does, it will extend all the way across from the two points of access, so all the way from Block A through Block B. So they will have a landscape, I believe, a mound there as well, because those are plenty there. That will provide for, but the depth is pretty adequate. I don't have that number offhand, but the depth is pretty extensive. I don't know if Mr. O'Connor wanted to comment on that.
I'm sorry, Kathy, did you say Mr. O'Connor wants to comment? Can we unmute Jim O'Connor?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, the front entrance along Johnny Cake Road, the full entrance is landscaped from the eastern edge to the western edge. I would say the minimum depth is 50 feet, and it would range up to about 125 feet at the deepest with extensive mounding planned and plantings all across the front of the community. And that is a condition that that will be installed contemporarily with Phase 1, and we will commence that landscaping immediately.
Thank you.
Mr. President? I guess, Mr. O'Connor, to put another level on it, I mean, you recommended, and planning recommended, that you were going to put that in when you built the first model, and that landscaping that you could put in at that time, whether providing would be in on the first model home, so people wouldn't be driving by looking into a construction site. And I know you agreed to that, and I, maybe you didn't mention that. When you have that model home, you're going to have all the landscaping you could possibly put in at that time, correct?
That is correct, yes. We will commence on that immediately, yes.
Thank you.
Council, any further questions while we have the applicant unmuted?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-012 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-013.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to Chagrin Valley Paving, Inc. for Contract A and Alternates 1 and 2 of the 2021 Road Repair Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this is our neighbor, annual neighborhood road repair program. And this does include, as one of those alternates, the work that we partner up with, with the city of Menor on the Lake. Mr. Schwiker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Six bids were opened on Friday, January 22 for the 2021 Road Repair Program. Project will provide for asphalt pavement resurfacing or an asphalt overlay on 17 city streets. Streets included in resurfacing are all or portions of the following: Becker Avenue, Bridgefront Road, Carolyn Drive, Ace Avenue, Amchar Drive, Edson Street, Meadowfield Road, Greenwood Drive, Headlands Road, Meadowbrook Drive, Milford Lane, Murray Avenue, Newton Drive, Old Heasley Road, West Heasley Road, Garden and Maiden Lane. Bid package consists of a base bid and two alternates, which included work within Menor on the Lake and the project's inclusion of Garden and Maiden Lane. Six bids received for the base bid and alternates 1 and 2 range from a low bid of approximately 1.2 million to a hybrid, high bid of approximately 1.5 million. It's been determined that Chagrin Valley Paving of Chagrin Falls, Ohio submitted the lowest total bid of $1,221,898.55. Engineer's opinion of probable construction cost was approximately 1.5 million. View of the bid from Chagrin Valley Paving indicates it's a performance with all contract requirements. It's recommended to award a contract to Chagrin Valley Paving for $1,221,898.55. The scheduled final completion date is August 20, 2021. Thank you.
And council, I would just add to that as well. I had asked Mr. Schwiker, because I thought that you would be interested in this. He gave me some information this morning about how, what type of economies we might realize by bidding this so early in the year. And I think, Mr. Schwiker, if I remember correctly, we, somewhere around 10, up to perhaps 10% is the benefit by not putting this out to bid during the height of the construction season, so that we get a lot of those bidders that are looking to fill up some work early in the year and getting a good-sized contract like this. So, so just want to indicate our appreciation to our engineering staff for getting this prepared in time to get this out right after the first of the year. And then the second comment is just a reminder to council that the one alternate for Garden Lane and Maiden Lane is being paid for through Neighborhood Stabilization Program Funds, the NSP funds. And essentially, we're an extension that goes back almost 10 years now on a program through the Obama administration. It's residual money that we're spending up. So we're happy to be able to advance the Headlands Road Street Rehab Program through utilization of those funds and get it moving.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-013 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-014.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to A&amp;J Cement Contractors, Inc. for Contract B and Alternates 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the 2021 Road Repair Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And council, this is our concrete program for the year. Mr. Schwiker?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak. Three bids were opened on Friday, January 22 for Contract B of the 2021 Road Repair Program. Project will provide full-depth concrete repairs to portions of five city streets. Bid package consisted of a base bid and four bid alternates. The streets included in the base bid are Chase Drive, Farmingdale Lane, Jenter Drive, T-Rose Drive, and White Drive. One of these bid under Alternate 1 will be utilized for work within Menor on the Lake. The quantities within Alternate 2 permit the reconstruction of approximately 30 inlet basins within the vicinity of the base contract streets. Quantities in Alternates 3 and 4 permit additional repairs on the base bid contract streets. The three bids received for the base bid and the alternates range from a low bid of approximately $630,000 to a high bid of approximately $896,000. It's determined that A&amp;J Cement Contractors of Uplight House submitted the lowest bid of $630,817.60. Engineer's opinion of probable construction cost was $634,898.40. It's therefore recommended that contract in the amount of $630,817.60 be awarded to A&amp;J Cement Contractors experiencing qualified in the work. Thank you.
Council, what is your pleasure?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-014 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-015.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into agreements with the city of Menor on the Lake for the 2021 Road Repair Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as council is aware, we have been teaming up with Menor on the Lake to put out for bid a larger contract for our annual road repair. Been doing this for many years, and it's worked out, I think, to both communities' advantage. Ask for your approval.
Council?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-015 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-016.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to perform all actions necessary to accept Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council 2021 Energized Community Grants Funds and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiak.
Thank you, Mr. President. And this would authorize us to accept a grant agreement, grant funds through NOPEC. This is the fourth year that we've received a grant funding for energy improvement projects here in the community. And, Mr. Schwiker, could you tell us a little bit about how we have and plan on using these funds?
For the fourth consecutive year, the city of Menor has awarded a grant to Northeast Ohio Public Energy Council through NOPEC, Energized Community Grants. 2021 grant will be $136,236, representing $4 for every household we won, $6 for every Ohio Public Energy Council, Energized Community Grants. 2021 grant will be $114,236, representing $4 for every household we move in the town, $6 for every household we move in the NOPEC in the election. The funds are intended to use in other city projects. That's used in these parks because new boilers can afford to consider more parks, along with two exterior windows at the police department. The project is 2021, and it's already been licensed through the state.
Counsel, usually willing to grant approval?
Move to suspend.
Second. Please call a roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Move to approve. Second. Please call a roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-016 has been approved. Ordinance number 21-0-017.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a tax increment financing agreement with ABC Mentor LLC to an economic development project located at 9570 Mentor Avenue and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Flipiak, followed by the law director's comments.
Thank you, Mr. President, and this, the agreement in front of you is pursuant to the desire of a developer to redevelop the site on Mentor Avenue that most of us know. It's a Sawyer House, former Wayside Farm property, and a number of restaurants along the way as well. Mr. Malicek has been working closely with the developer, and I'll ask him to tell you a little bit about the project, and then we can talk a little bit after that about the city's contribution through this development agreement. Mr. Malicek.
Thank you, Mr. Flipiak. I think as much as counsel knows, there is a specialty grocer project which is to be on the site of the current Sawyer House. The Sawyer House will be demolished, and perhaps Mr. Flipiak may want to comment on the particulars of that, either shortly or in the future, as to the disposition of those materials. The building is going to be about 13,000 square feet in nature, and assuming that demolition and contracts go to plan, they are expecting an opening later on this year, probably in the late fall.
So, counsel, with respect to the substance of the agreement before you, in exchange for that development, the city would utilize tax increment financing to construct an intersection at, approximately at the existing driveway for that lot. It would follow that we would also do some widening along Mentor Avenue westward that would both connect into that intersection and move just to the west of the old Heasley Road area. Mr. Swiger can, if you have any questions about the project itself, Mr. Swiger would be happy to answer those for you, but we think it's just under a million-dollar project. Again, would be paid for entirely through TIF proceeds. It's necessary for this project to go forward. I can tell you that the widening portion of that is something that is important to the city. It's a project that we've looked at in the past. We actually had some old preliminary plans, because this is contemplated a long time ago, when that section of Mentor Avenue became as busy as it is today. So we think overall, intersection work there, it would be timed coincidentally with the Wayside Drive signalization, much like we did on Heasley Road with the new intersection there at Springbrook Park subdivision. So, you know, we think it's a good project. We, there are certain details that we can't disclose at this point. Counsel is aware of most of those, and happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Zina.
Yes, Mr. President, members of counsel, in regard to, you know, specific assurances relative to the project, I think that the agreement that we've negotiated with the developer is satisfactory to protect the city's interests moving forward, make sure that the city's investment in infrastructure is tracking along with the development of the project, so should there be any unforeseen delays in its fruition, the city will be able to likewise adjust its investment to ensure that these specific expenses aren't going for naught. So unless there's anything more specific relative to any of the terms, I would recommend its approval.
Mr. President? Mr. President, if I could just add one other thing, I failed to mention this earlier. Mr. Malicek made reference to it. One component of this agreement also requires the developer to make available to the city and our request, building materials from the demolition of the existing structure on site. For the most part, that will include the exterior stone structure on that historic building, which we would salvage as much of that as we can and have that removed and probably stored at our Springbrook Park to be utilized for some repurposing, some enhancements, but most likely to that facility for sure, perhaps elsewhere in the city, but trying to hold on to a little bit of the history that exists there.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donovan?
I think the widening alone is a plus in the project. That alone, without even starting the building, is going to be an advantage to the city, so, yeah.
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
You know, several years ago, this counsel thoroughly explored the idea and the possibility of saving that structure. But as we found a couple weeks ago, when we went through, the structure is too far gone. There's no repairing it. So I'm sad to see Sawyer House leave and go away, but at the same time, I'm glad that we're going to be getting some of the building materials that we can do creative projects with in an effort to honor that historic structure, so kind of sad, but also kind of happy at the same time. Thank you.
Here.
Move to suspend.
Second. Please call a roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-017 has been approved. Second reading, we have none. Third reading, we have none. Managers' report, Mr. Flipiak.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of counsel. Counsel, in accordance with the Mentor City Charter changes that were adopted in 2014, Democracy Day is required to be held every two years. This year, it will be held on Tuesday, February 23rd at 5:30 PM, and it will be a virtual event. Any citizen of Mentor may attend and participate. Participation is limited to five minutes of comment per citizen, and you can consult with the city's website calendar for details on how to participate. City of Mentor paramedics, along with city staff workers, will again be assisting with the distribution of COVID vaccines this Friday, January 5th, at the City of Wickliffe's West End Pod, that's point of distribution. COVID vaccines will be given to those individuals who have pre-registered and who have been notified by the Lake County General Health District of their appointment time, and this pod will include MRDD clients and individuals over the age of 80 years old. And again, when we bring this information to you and to the public, it's just a reminder that these are not generally open to the public, that these are by appointment only. Again, the vaccine is distributed both to, in some portion, to the public sector through our General Health District, and we put on distribution points such as this one, as well as to pharmacies and hospital networks throughout the county. So what we tell our residents is to sign up with the Lake County Health District, also sign up when you're age-eligible with as many of the local pharmacies as you desire, and hope that whichever one calls you first, you're available to meet that time. Again, a reminder that the vaccine continues to be in very short supply. We, you may have, some of you may have noted that the city's Mentor School District is scheduled for the fourth week of distribution, I believe, beginning the week of the 23rd of, 26th of February, whatever that Monday is, and we're still, I'm still trying to get to the bottom of why we are in that fourth week instead of the first, second, or third week, and I haven't gotten an answer nor found anybody who's been able to give us an answer as to why, how the school districts were prioritized, so I'm not going to give up on, I'm trying to get to the bottom of that, and I'll report that information to counsel. But we greatly appreciate all the hard work that's been done by the choir chiefs, the health district, the EMA, on putting these pods together. You're aware that Mentor has hosted several of these. This is the first one on the west end of the county. There's the one in the planning on the east end, and again, I just tell the public that they can be confident that as soon as more vaccine is made available, we will, we are more than ready to be able to vaccin, to get it out to the public efficiently and as quickly as we receive it. Chief Searle, would you like to weigh in on anything?
I just received a report today that the schools are planning to do a closed pod on the 26th of February if they receive their vaccine, so that's the only update I have to offer. Thanks.
Thank you. And then finally, counsel, we have a few new businesses that we want to welcome to our Mentor community. Suburban Extended Stay, which is the former Motel 6 at 7677 Reynolds Road, is now doing business. Discount Tire at 8815 Mentor Avenue was open for business, as well as LLA Therapy at 8224 Mentor Avenue, which is a speech therapy location. So we thank them for their investment, and we wish them great success in the future. That's all.
Clerk's correspondence, Julie.
Counsel is in receipt of the Mentor Municipal Court, December 2020, and report.
Commission Committee reports, meeting minutes, Community Arts Commission, October 1, 2020, and November 5, 2020. Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, December 8, 2020. Municipal Planning Commission, December 10, 2020. Tree Commission, December 16, 2020. Old Business.
Mr. President?
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes. Now that we're going to be doing our striping in-house, do you think it's possible we could look at some type of innovative method of reflective type of striping we can find that solve that issue that seems to keep coming back to myself and probably other councilmen, like at 615, under the, over, over the overpass, under the overpass and in that area, that it's very difficult when it's raining and there's glare? Perhaps there's something out there now that we're doing it on our own without having a contractor do it.
Thank you, counsel. Well, perhaps to his great regret, Mr. Swiger has joined us in person today, so Matt, would you mind addressing that? And if you would mind raising the mic there, too.
That mic is dead.
It's not?
Oh, over here.
After all that, I wish I had a more involved answer.
A lot of work.
So I mean, we'll certainly look at different options. As you said, it's the, you know, there's reflective beads that are built into the paint, and at night, the light from your car reflects off those beads, but then at night, when the, or, you know, when there's water on it, obviously you don't get the proper reflection, which is the base problem, but, you know, there's always bigger and better options, and, you know, since it's a limited area, you know, even though those other options can cost more, you know, it's probably doable, since it is fairly limited.
And I think we're just looking at some specific areas that isn't for the whole system, so.
So it's, you know, the problem with the water, and then obviously you got lanes moving quickly in some of those areas. Sort of a little bit of a perfect storm of challenges through there. You also have a lot of ambient light, which kind of cuts down on the quality of the reflections, so. But yeah, I mean, we'll take a good, hard look at that.
Thank you.
What are the built-in advantages we have, counsel? Kirchner, is a fact that some of these areas, as we have experienced, it's kind of wear out faster than others, because you have so much lane shifting there in such a small area that just people tread upon those lines a lot more than they would in other areas, so we can, one of the reasons that we wanted to get into business of striping is that if we have to redo those mid-year or late in the year, we can do that.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Donovan?
On another side, back to your, the tiers of the schools getting their vaccine, you said we were Tier 4?
Well.
Where does that information come from? Does that come from the county or the state?
Yeah, I said tier, I mean, it's really just a schedule, so week one, week two, week three, and week four are when vaccines will be distributed to, it's by county, it's all districts within the county.
Oh, it's by county, okay.
And for whatever reason, we were, we were in the fourth week of distribution, and I want to believe that there's some rationale behind that. I just haven't been informed on what it is, and I've talked to a lot of people, including our own superintendent, and there's no one seems to have a good answer on that, so.
Thank you, sir.
We'll see. Thank you.
Any other old business? New business?
Mr. President?
Mr. Kirchner?
I'd like to move to appoint Mary Stuart McGovern to the open position on the Community Arts Commission.
Second. Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, Mary Stuart McGovern has been appointed to the Community Arts Commission for an unexpired term ending 12/31/2021. Persons before counsel, there are none. Mr. Kirchner?
There's no other new business. I would move that we adjourn into executive session to conference with the law director regarding two pending court cases.
Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landik?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. President, I would move that we go back into regular council session. Second. Julie, please call a roll.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.